I'm going to bring the Town of Milton Planning Board's meeting to all for March 6, 2018. First thing on their agenda is public comment. Let's give it time to anybody in the public would like to talk about anything that's not on the agenda. Not hearing any, and we're closed public comment, go on to public hearing. To receive public input on the approved language for the proposed amendments to the driveway regulations. Got any special flaws, Bruce?
I think you should all discuss this at length.
Yeah.
You should still have copies of the changes.
Yeah.
As you know, the only other changes that we made were recommendations from the directors of the courts, road agent.
Yeah.
And they were incorporated into the plan, into the draft, by the regulations.
Does the board, anybody on the board need questions or comments on this? You? Not hearing any, I'm going to go to the public, public hearing. Not hearing any, I want a closed public comment, a public hearing. Bring it back to the board. Do I have a motion?
Motion, what would you like the motion to state, sir?
Thanks, Larry. To approve the language to the new driveway regulations, to the driveway.
I move to approve the language to the new driveway regulations.
I'll second.
Second, discussion.
Just to register my whining complaint that I have no sympathy for scratches on a fire truck.
Okay.
And I still think that the driveway is too wide and puts too much impermeable surface on a parcel.
So noted.
That plus 20 cents.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Apologize? Not hearing any, we're all set? Okay. Next on the agenda is Alex Montesario, how's that, did I pronounce it right?
Pretty close.
Pretty close. Preliminary conceptual consultation to review a yield plan for a future open space subdivision, property located on Northeast Pond Road, tax map 23 lot 44, owner Three Ponds Investment LLC.
I'm going to stay sitting because it feels like that's the vibe here, so I'm going to stay still. So yes, my name is Alex Montesaro, I'm with Three Pond Investments. We own tax map 23 lot 44, with the drop of Northeast Pond Road and Bowlin Road down by the water. Our goal here on this piece of property is to do an open space subdivision. So the point of me being here tonight is to present a sketch yield plan with the amount of lots that we would like that are doable under the regular zoning, so that we can then move forward with an open space subdivision on this lot, which would allow us to conserve 50% of the lot, approximately 25 acres, as designated open space, and then the other 25 acres would become buildable lots. So this is a stepping stone for us to move forward with that design. These lots that are shown on your plan meet all the dimensional requirements of lots in the low-density zone, including the 200-foot frontage, they're all two-acre lots, and they meet your wetland requirements for the lot dimensions. When I went through this plan today, when I met with Bruce a couple weeks ago along with Walter, we had a sketch yield plan, that was literally a sketch, it was a pen and paper sketch. We brought that to Norway Plains and asked them to put that in the computer, and when that happened, there was a small error, which I caught at 3:30 today and couldn't have changed before I came today, with one of the lot lines. So these lots all still meet the dimensional requirements of a lot, they are all two acres, they all have the right amount of frontage, and they all contain the right amount of wetlands, but Lot 13 by an error cannot actually have a house on it because of the side setback and the wetland setback, there's not enough room for a house to go on that lot. So that was an error in the drafting, and I do have, you know, the sketch plan with that corrected. So a house can go on that lot, we can get 17 lots out here conceptually on this sketch yield plan. Another purpose of me being here tonight is in hopes to receive some initial feedback from the board as we start the process of moving forward with designing the open space subdivision, and see if you guys have any input on that. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board has.
So can you explain me the drawing that would allow that house to go on Lot 13?
So, just so you guys know, what Bruce had to deal with with us, this is what we came in with a week ago, and this is what we gave to Norway Plains, and they put this on this piece of paper, and so you can see why there's conflict or some confusion. But what happens is that lot line, and I'll flip this over. The Lot 13 lot line moves over this direction, and all of these actually have more than two acres, so there's a number of ways that it could be done, but the simplest way is that this ends up jutting out into this corner so that a septic and a house can go on that lot.
So it's jutting into Lot 14, which is exactly two acres, so...
Right, so Lot 14 gets the replacement acreage in the back of Lot 13. It becomes a little bit of a funky shaped lot.
Is such a configuration useful to the future homeowner?
This will not be the configuration to the future homeowner. This is just a conceptual plan to prove that 13 lots could go on this lot, or 17 lots could go on this lot. If the planning board accepts that, we're going to move forward with a completely different design, this will go in the waste bin.
Then I will rephrase the question to say, conceptually, is the shape of Lot 14, as you indicated, conceptually, an advantage to a future homeowner?
I don't see it as an advantage or a disadvantage. It's not a typical rectangular shaped lot, but I'm sure many of us, including myself, own lots that aren't.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'm just going to flip this around. So this lot line, which is here, moves over and becomes a little bit of a triangle.
The end game here tonight, hopefully, with the planning board, you really should take a close look at this conceptual plan that shows how a conventional subdivision can be laid out and meet all dimensional requirements and all aspects of zoning, so that you can then approve a yield and number, so that the developer can then go back and using the open space subdivision zoning regulations, craft or prepare an open space subdivision plan that shows whatever, if you think it's 16 or if you think it's 17, that many lots that are smaller in size and in smaller dimensions and clustered in one or two areas that would be better for the land and better for the butters. In other words, you're going to have open space, 50% of it in the open space, in the open space subdivision regulations has to remain open space, not all developed like a conventional subdivision would be, but you've got to get to a number for the developer to base their calculations on, and that's really the upshot of what the planning board needs to do tonight. They need to determine whether or not this concept plan before you passes the straight face test of your garbage zones, and then make a motion that says, this is the number we're sending you off with.
And if I could add to that real quick, in my discussions with Norway Plains, that is just a number, so if you said you could do 40 lots tonight, obviously when I'm asking for 40, we would still be limited by the characteristics of the land, the road length and things like that. So it's possible that we'll come back to you if you approve this for 17 lots with only 15 lots. Just because you say that we can design with 17 lots doesn't mean we'll necessarily come back with 17, that's just a good starting point for us.
Am I not correct in the conceptual preliminary that we don't have to make that final discussion, decision, everything that we render at this meeting is strictly that, preliminary?
Not if they're following the open space subdivision rules. There is a stat that's called out in the open space subdivision regulations that say that the developer has to come before you with the yield plan. I mean, they have decided to come before you and call it the preliminary consultation phase. They could have done it in the design review phase, but I kind of think that's premature because they're not showing you the design that they're going to ultimately be here. This is an intermediate step, and they just want to know what you feel is the number of conventional lots that can reasonably be placed on this parcel.
The issue I take with that is how it's being presented to us. It's being presented to us in an 11 by 17 the night of the meeting, and, you know, so I'm supposed to look at this in five minutes, make up my mind? That's just not the way it's supposed to be done. It's just supposed to be given to us seven days in advance, we're supposed to have it at home, you know, trying to make grades out of this, I don't know if we're steep slopes. Unless somebody has reviewed this plan and tell me that those are 17 lots of record, how am I supposed to know that in five minutes?
Well, I mean, I can give you a recommendation, but it would be with the caveat that I think I would need to see what Lot 13 really needs to work on, and all the others in their adjustment because of the error that Alex is talking about here. So I really can't give you a recommendation tonight.
And again, that's why preliminary, you know, okay, it looks like we're 17, you know, you might be off one, but, you know, we can move ahead with that, or if you want a definitive answer, I think what's presented to us in this fashion, that's a shot. That's asking too much.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Did I, Larry Brown, did I hear you clearly that you have made no assessments of the character of the land and roadway?
Can you expand on your question?
Either for the quote 17 lots of record or for the open space development?
I have not had the roadway engineered, is that what you're asking?
No, I haven't made any assessments of the character of the land and the roadway. The engineer can say A, you can still say B and C. That are you satisfied that the roadway as it is being shown for the 17 lots is practical? And that the access to those 17 lots is practical?
Sure.
That's what I mean by the assessment, because then you would be making, I would presume, the same assessment of the character of the land and roadways in reducing the area. And I don't mean to be sarcastic, but the quickest image that comes to mind in terms of reserve public space is hard to place firstly in a swamp.
Yes, no, I understand, and yes, the conversation has happened with the engineers. This parcel under a different ownership has been before this board previously, in 2005, some of you may have been here, most of you probably weren't, and this road was designed as part of that original subdivision. The engineers both think it's plausible that this road could possibly be built. That being said, I'm sure many of you are familiar with Bowlin Road and the state that it's in, and the other day I tried to drive around it, and there was a truck in someone's driveway, and I couldn't even pass the truck in the driveway. You know, at some points it's a very narrow right of way, and it's not a public street, so that will have to be considered when we come back with the open space subdivision, and it's quite possible that we would or wouldn't connect to Bowlin Road in the future. That being said, we understand that the boundary line survey is being done, redone right now, it was never recorded when this was originally planned before the planning board, so Norway Plains is just double checking all of the engineering that they have, and they are retracing the boundaries of the lot, and the wetlands delineations, since they are from 2005, are also being redone. And all of that updated information would be included on a future plan when we came back for an open space subdivision. And again, saying 17 lots or 10 lots or five lots just gives us a starting point, it doesn't excuse us from meeting your regulations, we still have to come back with an approvable plan that meets the subdivision regulations in the conservation subdivision ordinance, and we're not trying to get around that in any way, we're just trying to take the first step, which the zoning tells us to take with the planning board.
If you all have your open space development section of the zoning ordinance in front of you, number seven at the bottom of page 22 talks about development density. It says, "The total number of dwelling units allowed in an open space development subdivision should not exceed the number of dwellings that would be allowed under a conventional subdivision or the zoning district in which the site is located. In no case shall the density exceed the soil's carrying capacity and accommodate a septic system for each dwelling unit as required by DES consistent with RSA 485A. The allowable number of units will be determined upon submission," I assume it's to you, even though it doesn't say, "by the applicant of a yield plan. A yield plan is a sketch plan for a conventional subdivision for the subject property. The planning board could approve such plan as a conventional subdivision as it complies with all requirements of the town's subdivision regulations, and what it doesn't say is zoning requirements as well." But I caution the board on this, that you can get into the weeds by presupposing that the plan that's before you is what the applicant tends to come before you with. You just need to make a determination about whether the lots you're looking at meet zoning and subdivision requirements, and that the road can be put in that creates the frontage. That's it. Can the road be put in? It goes through some sections of wetlands, but the applicant will 99% be able to get wetlands dredge and fill permits to do that upon finding by DES that that's the least impactful path for the roadway to take. The idea of, you know, creating Lot 13, to me, that's a little problematic as I see it. There's nothing wrong with the planning board making a determination, then it's only 16 lots. Or you could wait until next meeting to see a plan that was corrected. So I see that as really what's before you. You know, my review of this plan indicates to me that you can put that road in, and that at least 16 of those lots, as I look at the plan, would be approvable by this board if a conventional subdivision came before you.
You don't think a DES person would make the argument that coming in off Bowlin Road, coming in off Northeast Pond Road, that they couldn't stay to the south side of them wetlands and run a little higher and miss them altogether?
Well, DES will always make sure that they balance the highest and best use or development of the property with the impacts to things like wetlands. That's my answer on that one.
So that they would grant, they would grant permission to go right smack through the middle of the wetlands to gain two lots?
Maybe you should adjust the question. But I believe, I believe they would, that's been my experience.
It's really hard to tell when you look at the plan that has got the subdivided lots on, and then you flick to the second page, which looks like a million, I'm assuming all them slash marks are elevations, steep slopes.
That's correct. What happened was in this yield plan, they put, and again, this was a miscommunication between Norway Plains, and they're very busy, and it should have been done before, but regardless, these are shown at 10-foot intervals, these slopes, and then on your second plan, they're showing at two-foot intervals, which is more conventional.
Again, when you flick the two and you see the two, you wonder whether this looks a little more on the far side, and then this looks like it's all mountainous, and I haven't been out there, and, you know, again, I want to give you the benefit of the doubt on the lots, but, you know, you hand us a plan that's Lot 13's a little off, and then you look at all these elevation lines, and you're going, what is this?
You're not giving me the benefit of the doubt, I didn't draw this, you know, Norway Plains, who are certified engineers and certified drafters, have written on this plan that they meet your subdivision regulations, so you're putting your faith in them, not me, just to clarify that.
Number two, the information depicted here on was provided by Crown Point Survey Company. Norway Plains has not performed any boundary or site feature field locations, therefore all work must be field verified before actual engineering design work could begin.
So I don't put any faith... I don't put any faith in line number two.
So what that means is like I say, that they need to retrace the boundaries because that was never recorded in 2005 when it was done.
And I add that that's not the intent of a yield plan.
Right.
That you would do a fully engineered subdivision plan for review by the board. It's to get to that number that they can go do an open space subdivision and bring that to you for your review, revision, and then maybe approval.
And frankly...
This is an intermediate step.
Yeah.
If we were going to do all that work to design a conventional subdivision and pay for all that work to be done, then we would just end up likely with a conventional subdivision. There's no economic or any sort of sense in doing all the engineering and planning for a conventional subdivision, which costs tens of thousands of dollars to throw it out and restart with a conservation subdivision.
Yeah, I like the open space idea, it truly makes sense, but in all honesty, if you're entitled to 17, I want to give you 17.
Sure.
If you're only entitled to 15, I only want to give you 15.
15, absolutely.
That's all.
Yeah.
You know, I think the open space is great, but I don't want to give you 17 if you only deserve 15, you know?
Sure, absolutely.
That's all.
Yeah, and I'm happy to come back in a couple weeks with that corrected, I mean, it would be a minor thing for Norway Plains to do in the meantime.
Any more comments from the board?
So just so clear and plain, who is saying that these meet all our requirements?
So two engineers at Norway Plains have worked on this plan, Steve Oles and Paul Blank.
Do we have, you know, again, do we have anything from them or anything that says that these meet all?
Yeah, that was the intent of the notes on the plan, so when I had the conversation with them, they said, "The best thing and the easiest thing that we can probably do is put these on as notes on the plan, which says, 'The parcel is owned low-density, these are the lot requirements, these are the building setbacks, all lot size was calculated according to the zoning ordinance, and the purpose of this is to show that the parcel can yield 17 lots.'" So those are all in the notes on your plan, notes one through nine on the left of your plan. And I do have an extra copy that I want me to bring the big plan up for you.
Larry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One more question in terms of having a contiguous block of land of very topography, wet, dry, whatever, that represents open space. One of the problems of developing 17, or 16, or 1595 lots is that you wind up with segmentation of habitat, because you no longer have a protected wetland because it has been sliced into pieces. And I am just uncomfortable, I was here back in 2005, uncomfortable looking at something that doesn't show me both sides of the menu. And I don't know how much of this road we might decide to keep and to send it, for example, going straight back to that horseshoe curve on the Northeast Pond. So you come in and you have an upside-down horseshoe, and, you know, things happen. That's just conversation, that is by no means an engineering assessment, but you, I'm sure you have to have been thinking of where you would put a more dense development. You would have to be thinking in terms of septic field loading, in terms of wellhead radius protection and things like that, and that would seem to constrain your choices to something that you might already have a fair idea of where that is. To the degree that Bruce tells me that's a fair question, I ask it, if it's not, I didn't.
Yeah, no, I think that's, I can answer that to the best of my ability. We have not necessarily engineered any open space subdivision plans, we conceptualize them as a team with the engineers and in the office. We would prefer to put development closer to the water, over on this side, let me make sure that's right here. Yeah, over on this side of the lot, and protect this as open space. Something that I heard you say was segmentation of wetlands and of open space, and, you know, I say here before you at a preliminary meeting that our game plan is to put all the development on one half and all of the open space on another half. Another thing that's going to restrict us in our future development that I think is going to be our biggest setback possibly beside the road, is that your open space subdivision requires 50% open space, but it also requires that 50% of the open space is upland, it can't all be steep slopes and wetland. So a lot of this lot is steep slopes and wetland as it is. So we have to provide you with 50% of the open space as upland, and I think that's going to be the biggest control on how many lots we can come back with in the future. That might be the determining factor that says, you can do 17, but we can only make 12 work.
Thank you, thank you, that sounds so much better than playing first being a slop.
Another issue you'd be faced with is the length, if you're not going to access Bowlin Road, it would be the length of the cul-de-sac.
Right, which is 1,000 feet.
Obviously, the area you pointed to would be far more accessible off Bowlin Road than coming in hallway from Northeast Pond Road.
It would, yeah.
Yep. I think we've had several open space developments come before us, but they've always come with the plan and the yield plan at the same time, so it's... So it's just a little different.
And I've done that in the past in other towns where we presented the yield plan at the same time as the open space subdivision. In this case, we didn't want to, there's a lot of factors about this lot, including the steep slopes, the wetlands, the roads that will be connecting to, that will be financially a hardship for us in designing this plan. It's not necessarily just a simple drying cut piece of land that we can subdivide. It's going to take a lot of work for us to get there. So we just wanted some assurance that we're moving in the right direction before we do that. I'm happy to come back, you know, if you guys feel more comfortable with that line being--
Well, you know, I mean, you know, so you show us a plan at 17 and we can take your word for it and we can dissect it a little bit. But, you know, is it a deal breaker if it was only 16?
Not necessarily, yeah.
So, you know, I mean, you know.
Obviously, we're in the business of getting the most amount of lot possible. And you're in the business of making sure we're following the zoning. So we're happy to compromise. But we think 17 lots is not only doable, but more than reasonable on 58 for parcel.
Yep.
So what would the board like to do? Have them come back? Say 17's good?
You can, you know, you can tell me 16's good and I can come back next month and show you 17 and we can talk about it again. We can either accept 16 or come back. I mean, I'm happy to do. You know, a few weeks is no big deal. We've owned this property for a very long time and it's not going anywhere.
I would be more comfortable saying that, you know, looking at this, you're pretty safe with the 16. I think if you want that extra lot, you got to go, you know, you got to prove it just a little bit more.
Sure.
In all honesty, this is my last night on the planning board, so I'm going to let everyone else decide that.
Congratulations.
Wouldn't you like to rub that in?
Well, as I look at it, trying to squeeze it out of Lot 14, really, when you look at eight, nine, 10, and 11, and for that matter even 12, that's where you've got space that--
Right.
You've got, you've got space to play with there.
There's definitely a number of ways it could be rearranged.
Yeah, rather than try and, you know, take a little, squeeze a little here and squeeze a little there. So while it'd be easy to say we ought to just go with 16, I don't, I don't think you're that far away.
Definitely. Yeah, some of the lots that are about it are, you know, 2.8, 3-acre lots and they can definitely, you know, there's 58 acres, I mean, there's 48.8 acres here. There's only 17 lots. So basic math says there's plenty of the land to get 17-2-acre lots.
There's not a lot of variables with basic math. Yeah, Lot 13, and you can redesign it, you know, a lot of different ways. But as I see that one right now, even if you move 14 or you go into the other lots, a lucky customer that has Lot 13, if it were to stay this way, would, even minimal adjustments to 14, they're not doing anything else too much after that. They wanted an extra garage, they're bumming.
Sure.
You know what I mean?
Absolutely. Yeah, and that's why I would never, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't design that lot for a typical subdivision because it doesn't have, you know, that extra movable space.
Well, it seemed to me that it's not worth a lot of your effort to try and do that.
Sure.
So if we were to, if I was to move that we allow 16 as a motion and then we get to open that up for discussion?
I would, if you did that, I would take the burden off Mr. Bordeaux and make the second.
That would be good.
So we have a motion before the board to allow 16 lots. Any further discussion on this?
I think it's reasonable, looking at what we've got in front of us here with Lot 13 and the larger amount of white land that's on that extra lot, so.
It's not saying, you know, with a rewrite and they redo it, that they can't get 17 out of it. Right now, where we stand, I think 16 is reasonable.
But if you look down the road, the other constraints are--
It may end up--
Are going to end up being--
Absolutely.
Are going to drive that number down. They're not going to drive it up.
Sure.
So, you know, rather than be a roadblock.
There's a lot of slopes to be, you know, not only the fair amount of wetland, but there's a fair amount of slopes in that property.
So, you know, I'll let them do the real plan.
Mm-hmm. I agree with that.
With the 16 going in and see what we come up with.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah. Once upon a time, when the world was young and Chris Jacobs was working for Norway Plains, I think I remember correctly that he created the lot size by changing the radius on the, on the end of the cul-de-sac. And it came up to the legal number square feet. So I'm sure that within, given the 16 build-out, Norway Plains can subdivide.
Yes, I'm sure they can. We're pretty creative people.
No further discussion? Take a vote on it, 16 lots. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you guys very much for your time. Sorry I didn't have full-scale plans for you.
Don't know, don't you?
Then we move on to a formal design review phase. Next door, if you want to, if you want to not do that phase and avail yourselves of planner services. So the board might feel more comfortable on which direction we're taking.
Sure, yeah. It'll be a few months before you see me again. We've got a lot of work to do. They're re delineating the wetlands. That should be done by mid-April. As I said, they're re-doing a survey boundary out there. That should be done mid-April. Once those things are done, we're not going to do any, any design until those things are done. Once those are done, we'll start designing and then be back, both with a meeting with Bruce and probably a design review phase with the planning board. That would be my game plan. But it'll probably be many. And I'm pregnant with twins, so you won't recognize me as I'll be out to here. It'll be a lot harder for you to carry all this stuff around.
And design review phase is a little different from this preliminary consultation phase in that a butters are going to be notified. And there isn't a public hearing aspect to the design review phase, but it's to the, it should be allowed with regard to a butters' comments if they know something about the land that would help in the design of the project, to let them speak.
Absolutely. And we've been really fortunate to be able to run into a lot of those people out there and have conversations with them already. So they've been very helpful to this date. All set?
Thank you, thanks.
Thank you guys very much.
What's the matter, Nick? Those chairs not any more comfortable?
No.
Yeah, that's about it. Next on the agenda are site plan review regulation analysis and revision. Bruce, I think you've got--
Larry, if you could pass those down. It's a single sheet. You have to know, our work plan for today's theme call was to begin work on site plans, regulations, to bring them up to snuff, to revise them as per, you know, the Bible, the Planning Board New Hampshire Bible and other documents.
Read it. I read it.
I'm beginning to do that. And I'm starting to work on Article 3, which is the Application Procedures and Requirements section. In your site plan regs, I don't have, I don't have anything for you to look at tonight on that. What I am going to say is that there are several requirements for the applications and procedures that are not up to date. One of them is our requirement that says the plans have to be submitted 17 days prior to a public hearing. That's not enough. Statute was changed to call for 21 days as minimum. But each town can bump that up to a higher number if they want. So one of the things I wanted to talk about tonight is in collaboration with Dana, who has to do all the heavy lifting on this stuff, is even 21 days enough so that I can have an idea on what to put in the changes? There are several other procedural and application requirements, things that I'll go over with you the next time we meet. But the one that I think is important to look at and give me an idea on is what I just handed out to you. And that is something that may come up in the future with regard to what's happening on local farms. This particular addition, because I don't think we address it at all in our site review regulations, has to do with when agriculture is a business and when it isn't a business and when the planning board has the authority to require site plan review for things that happen on a farm. Arms stands, selling their products and maybe some other things. So this language is model language taken from, what the heck they're calling today, the Office of Strategic Planning, I think.
Strategic Initiative.
Oh, is that what it is? This used to be called New Hampshire State Planning years ago when I started. That made sense to me. But then they changed it to the Office of Energy and Planning and I never could figure out how electricity went with planning. But anyway, that office has suggested that language such as this be added to your site plan regulations to be in line with the agricultural statutes that have been morphing through the last few years. So that's something to think about. I'm not asking you to do too much with it tonight. Maybe discuss it. I think the important thing tonight for me, though, is to let you know that I'm beginning article by article and I will have, I will have paper copies. I will have electronic copies to you in advance of your next meeting. I've said that to you before, but you know. Oh, I know. And the final question that I have for board tonight on this is, we have two ways we can go. We can take this document right here and we can make updates, revisions, and additions to it. Or we can throw it away and we can go with a brand-new, here's what New Hampshire Planning says are the best model ordinances for site plan regulations tailored for this town. So it's this, or it's something new tailored for the town. Give us some discussion on that.
What would your recommendation be?
I didn't hear you.
What would your recommendation be? Sorry. Throw it all out and start over or let it ride?
My recommendation is always to throw out regulations that are so outdated that the fixes are Band-Aids.
This was up to 1995.
It's a good year.
I'd be a little worried about the checks and balances and, you know, what did we miss now, you know?
Well, there's missing, there are things that aren't in our site review regulations now.
Right.
And there's things that are not correct. There's things that are not in line with state statute.
And if we took ours and piecemealed it, you would make all them corrections. You know, if you start from scratch, how do you know that, you know?
Because there's a model ordinance template.
That covers everything.
It covers everything and you have to make, you have to go through it sentence by sentence, section by section, to make sure that it fits Milton. If it doesn't fit Milton, you change it, but you make sure that all of the S management practices, all of the requirements that are called out in RSA 676 and others are adhered to in here. You go right to the state statute. It may have a list of what should be in your site review regulations, point by point. And that needs to, that needs to be done because ours don't do that right now. It's behind the curtain.
And these are probably done by Stratford Regional Planning.
Many years ago.
Many years ago. I think we ought to just toss.
After spending all that time trying to repair the master plan and getting nowhere. Well, no, repair the old one by sentence and, you know, sentence in, sentence out. We didn't get very far. So starting from scratch, and it's not really scratch, but starting with a updated template is--
Probably more efficient.
It's a better way to go.
Mr. Brown?
Okay. The state says, 1 through 10, new rigs, you shall adopt them because they are statute. So you are required to add them, to use them, to cite them, and they are the defensive standard for town zoning, right? No, 1 through 10, whatever it is. 11 through 15 are permissible to the history, topography, and culture of the town. Where do we find our 11 through 15? We have to take 1 through 10 because they're cited as new statute. Where is the 11 through 15, which have given Milton the rural qualities that it presently has that protect homeowners from the pig farm next door, which I would like to talk about with the handout? Where does that come in?
If I understand your question correctly, Larry, I think you are kind of mixing up zoning with your own regulations. Now, you, you are a planning board. You've been authorized to be a planning board in town. The town voted at some point in the past to have a planning board that reviews and approves site plans, which means you have to have site plan regulations that are in line with RSA 674, 43, and 44. And that's where we, that's where we glean most of the actual requirements for what has to be on a site plan, for you to approve it.
Yes.
In addition to what zoning says. They go together, but they are separate.
That, so anyway, on the mythical 1 through 10 from the state.
types of lighting and the technical aspects of the, the down lighting and the nits and the LEDs and all that stuff. And others simply say it can't shine off-site. So, you have different things that you can save from town to town, but you have to address lighting. Are you following me on this one?
Mm-hmm.
That's just one example.
So, what harm to present Milton do the new regulation, the new regulations do?
None, because both of the things already here will still be in the new one. Most.
Okay.
With some corrections and changes. It's just gonna be in a different format. Maybe it'll be easier to read and understand.
Got redundant.
That's what the model ordinances are about. And you lose nothing.
That's what I wanted, that's what I wanted to hear.
It took me a while to understand your question, sorry.
And again, once, if we do decide to go with all the regulations, we still have to review it and make changes, delete or whatever.
And have a public hearing before you approve it.
Yes, right.
So, we get, we get defensibility.
Guy's got a lot of work on his hands.
I don't wanna hear another word out of you.
So, you get common citation, defensibility, and statewide model.
Right.
Does the board feel we should go all new?
Yep.
Yep.
Yep. As my daughter would say, let it go.
I think the general consensus is go new.
The number of days for an application to be submitted prior to the, the language says, "An application for review and consideration by the planning board shall be filed with the planning board land use clerk not less than seventeen day calendar days prior to the date of the regular meeting of the planning board at which the applicant seeks such consideration."
Very well.
The statute now says twenty-one, but it's a minimum.
Thirty.
You could set it anywhere you want.
Yep.
And, you know, it could be twenty-four.
Let's, let's ask the clerk. She's a fool.
That's my recommendation, is to ask Dana.
Yep.
Yeah.
Having more time is always good, just in case, like, that way you guys have more time, too, and Bruce has more time and all that stuff. Thirty days doesn't seem completely unreasonable to me, especially where, just to try to prevent, a lot of times in the past, I feel that developers come in here running down the door, and then they don't have their full, complete, best plans for the board. So, I think that thirty days would make them slow down, take a breath, and give everyone enough time to review everything.
Would it be valuable, though, to measure that in workdays rather than calendar days?
I would say thirty days for calendar days. And if you were gonna go work days, yeah, it would get confusing with holidays.
If you did thirty days, that would take the weekends, and then that still gives you enough workdays.
Just thinking about those, you know, every December we talk about, you know.
I think it would make, still give enough time.
Okay.
An ample time for holiday times when we're out of the office a lot.
All right.
And snow days and things like that. But if you guys have a counter offer, I'm open to it.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah. Filed with the land use clerk, the meeting before the subsequent month's meeting. That gives you the.
Confusing in case you guys don't consistently meet twice a month.
Well, then, you know, whatever, whatever the phrase would be, that it has to come to you, so it can be, you know, thrown up in the air for us to know it's coming and have the thirty days on file with you for the, for the next full month's meeting, whatever, whatever language fits.
Pretty sure the language is calendar days.
Yeah.
And you may understand what you just said, because it didn't sound to the board. But, but these application procedures and requirements are really for the applicant to know when and how to do an application. So, if you put it in the simplest language for them, which is, hey, you have thirty calendar days. So, you call up the land use clerk and say, tell me when the next three planning board meetings are. Once they have those three dates, they can back, they can backtrack the thirty calendar days and figure out which one is the best one to do and when to get the plans in, which then gives everybody enough time to review.
Yeah.
Especially if you get to a point where there's a lot of development going on, you don't wanna limit yourself to so many days and have five sets of plans to review. You never know.
That's a long time.
I know, but you never know.
I've seen these guys stacked up here, five minutes of four over the last day, and they're not complete. You get them and you can't even get time to review, say, complete or not. So, I think thirty days gives everybody ample time to get it together.
I like your tight face.
Yeah.
Makes up plans on Monday.
Bruce, you got any more comments?
No, that's it. I have, I have some direction.
Yeah, it's just one last comment. It seems like if you had a real simple lot line adjustment or a simple application before the board, I mean, thirty days is, you know, a long time.
Well, it's gonna be, thirty days is thirty days.
Well, yeah.
So, it's simple, and then we all think it's simple, then we get it, and it's a big pile, and then it turns out being simple.
Plus, it's better to just have it a firm day, you have a strict amount of timeframe, and not make it different, like, oh, for this and that and that.
Well, yeah, then that gets confusing.
Then there's less gray.
But, you know, for some of the simple stuff, the thirty-day wait seems like part of wait.
How long does it take you to make the plans, make decisions? You gotta wait. Government takes time.
Well, Norway Plains is not taking any new work until September right now. So, that's it. Yeah. Okay, the next on the agenda is the approval of minutes of February twentieth, two thousand eighteen.
Epstein.
Make a motion to approve the river point, two thousand eighteen meeting minutes?
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Peter. Any discussion? Not hearing any? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Epstein.
Epstein. Dana, do you have any other business?
Um, yes. We received from the Department Environmental Services a request for more information on the alteration of terrain permit application submitted by Mike Shea, Eastern Materials, Jones Brook Access Road. So, I don't know if you wanna read that, what they're looking for, or if the board wants to read it. They need this further information in order to make their final determination on the permit.
Several of the things that they're asking for in that letter require changing the plan that came before you.
Okay.
Adding things, correcting things. And so, my suggestion would be that we contact the applicant and their engineer to let them know that we would expect a, an amended plan or an updated plan. I don't even believe that you've signed the.
No.
Activation permit plan yet.
No, we haven't.
So, if they have to make the changes for the DES and it's changes to the plan that you saw.
Yeah.
You really should see the, the corrected plan.
Okay. I can read it into the minutes if you'd like, but there's ten of them. If anybody would like to glance at it, we have it here.
I think we scan them into the minutes.
Pardon?
We scan it into the minutes.
There you go. Anything else, Dana?
Um, elections next week. And vote.
Okay.
Are you broad, Ian?
Vote often? Yep.
One, one question. Bruce, on this, a site plan is not required for agricultural activities or, or structures.
Is that the whole sentence?
No, I'm just reading the first part of it. Where did that come from and what do we have it?
It came from the Office of Planning Strategic Initiatives. It's like a missiles.
And this is, and this is their, and this is their, their model?
Yes, that's what they recommend.
Are you requesting feedback from us? And if so, on what date?
Next meeting.
Next meeting, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, Bob. It's our last one.
Get it good.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Brown's got it.
Further, further motion to thank Mr. Bordeaux?
Yes, we can have that motion. How many years of service?
I have no idea. Long time.
Long time.
Yeah.
Long time. Thank you.
No problem. It's been fun.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good night.
Is there any chance my, my daughter and some of them are thinking of buying another?
Fixer-upper?
Yeah.
Yep.
Buying it up on Third Street. I don't even know what Third Street is.
It's off of.
Little shack, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I didn't know if.